Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the September 18th, 2024 special budget meeting of the Fond du Lac City Council. Our first item of business is roll call, which is done electronically, and we are all here, so I will declare a quorum as present. Next, we will discuss the 2025 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan overview. First is the process for budget approval, introduced by our city manager and our director of administration.
Thank you, Ms. Brolk. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to just cover the memo that was part of the agenda, because there are a couple of important points, I think, that's worth pointing out. So state statute says that you have to have a public hearing for the budget. And so that's kind of the pivot point of what this memo is about. And I want to just highlight a couple of dates. And so tonight, what we're doing is, you know, we're going to address some of the questions that came in to Tricia and me. And then, we will proceed after this meeting to publish public notices for the public hearing. And so in October, in the newspaper, we will have advertised the public hearing. And basically, a public hearing is something that you do every two weeks. I mean, frankly, our public comment is like a public hearing. The difference is, state statute says you have to do a public comment for the budget. And so we'll be advertising those twice in October. And then the public hearing itself, in other words, the public comment, will be the second meeting in October. That's an important time, because up till that time, you make changes to the budget by a majority vote. After that time, you've got to have a two-thirds vote. And two-thirds for you is five people instead of four. That's so that's a change I wanted to mention to you in terms of what happens after the public hearing. So again, that's the second meeting of October. And then the first meeting in November is when our schedule says you would vote on the budget, the capital improvement plan. And because we have federal funding for transit, there's also a vote on the transit budget. There's a resolution that we need to have in hand for the Federal Transit Agency. And so that's the first meeting in November. Does anybody have any questions about that? Great. So on the agenda, you know, next step is to talk about the budget and then the CIP. But because of the questions that came in, it's really mostly about budgets. So Ms. Brolk, if you don't mind, I'll just, I will summarize the question and then provide the feedback. There's not many here. So probably about five points that I'm going to hit on that came in from, from you. Number one, this is a request for an explanation of page 70, the county sales tax. And so Maggie, if you would, let's navigate to page 70 of the budget book, and I'll walk you through that. And then Maggie, if you could, once we, one more page, yeah, there you go. Would you magnify that, a couple of magnifications, so that we can look at the bottom of that page in more detail? Okay. So I think what the question is getting at is to understand what's going on at the bottom of this page. And so at the beginning of this year, you see what we had as a balance. And this, the revenue source for this is Fond du Lac County. They have allocated $1 million for the municipalities in the county, and then divvied it up according to a formula. And the city of Fond du Lac's allocation has generally been somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 in the past couple of years. The primary expenditure in 2024 is for the revaluation. Our thought process is, these are one-time allocations of revenue. So we're always trying to identify one-time outflows. And so that expenditure line of 284 is almost entirely the expense of the revaluation for the real estate in the city. So what you see there is, at the end of this year, we projected we would have a little over 200, so $219,000 in this account. And then we project that we will receive again another allocation from Fond du Lac County in 2025. And you can see that amount there. The expenditures of 145 are detailed above in the budget comments. The largest one is our estimate for what a, the wage analysis will cost as far as the consultant. And so that's our estimate's 110. It'll be what it'll be. We will go to market for that and then, and take bids. But we think this, again, that's a one-time outlay. This is a good source for that. And so if that's, if we're about right on the expenditures, what that shows is, at the end of 2025, we'll have over $350,000 in this account. The hope is that that will be a buffer in case we need a contingency to implement the wage and salary study. And so I don't know what that might look like. We won't know until after we've done the analysis. But this, this 350 is a contingency source in case we need to, to tap into some additional funding to implement the wage and salary study. And so that's, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of, of the Fond du Lac County sales tax allocation to the city. Does that answer the question? Great. You're welcome. Next, this is a question about transit. And it's, it's about the, both the schedule, but also the money involved in the discussions about expanding bus service to the Fond du Lac County campus, once the offices move out there. And so fortunately for the city, it's really easy. The Fond du Lac County Highway Department is going to reconfigure some of the driveways out there for ADRC, so that the driveway is serving the building in a way that's more convenient and adjacent to the building. And, and we're going to find it very, frankly, very simple to move the bus stop to where it needs to be, at really no cost at all. And so you won't see any sort of investment in that regard. The, the schedule for that, we're just going to respond to, you know, when, when the moves happen, and when Fond du Lac County Highway Department says they're done, then we can, we can make that change. The next question is about our, the health insurance that we referenced in the budget memo, and, and we made reference to it in a couple of presentations. And this is, this is also a question that's come from some of our employees, because we've been having some, some sessions with employees to talk about this additional layer we want to add to our health insurance, to give employees the opportunity to take their deductible down to zero, but also to save the city as the employer money as well. And so this question is, what percentage of covered providers are considered best performing? And you may have heard us explain that there's, there's been a lot of work done in the private sector to identify physicians that have high success rates, so that you don't have to go back for a second knee replacement, a second hip, whatever, that it gets done efficiently and cost effectively. And the company Garner that we're partnering with has access to that data, and has put that data to use in a way that can illustrate the performance of physicians in any sort of given metropolitan area. And they're going to do that for us. So the answer, what percentage of covered providers are considered best performing? Because what we want, what we want is for our employees to select physicians that have a high level of success. And if they do that, deductible goes to zero, because there's a reimbursement factor. We, right now, of the physicians that are taking new patients, about a third of those fit the criteria of best performing. In other words, when, when an employee, an insured person looked on the app, because it's an app-based information source, they would see a number of physicians and some descriptions and photographs, and say, here are the physicians that fit the criteria for the deductibility offset. In other words, those best qualified physicians. And about a third of them fall into that category right now. So hopefully that, that answers that question. Now, I would also mention that we have a number of engagements yet with, with employees, and we also have a number of individual questions too, because everybody has, or not everybody, but many people have very personal needs, and they want to get validation that if they go to the corporate care clinic that, that we provide with SSM, that they'll be covered in the same way they would if they were going to a regular doctor, et cetera, et cetera. And so there's a lot of conversations ongoing to, to make sure that we're addressing those individual questions as well. Because this is brand new. The whole conversation and the subject matter, I think, is, is going to be a subject of many conversations, as well as we've, we've been contacted by one of the hospitals in the city, asking for some insight too, because they want to make sure they're comfortable with this discussion about rating physicians and best qualified, et cetera. There's, the next question has to do with some clarifications. The request was for clarifications on the municipal court fee schedule. So Maggie, let's flip to page That's a good example right there. So you see the, the citation amount for those violations goes to zero. The reason why, and there's other examples of that in the fee schedule. The reason why for that is because those are being transitioned to demerits, rather than citation amounts. And then, a couple of pages later, Maggie, if you would, let's scroll to page 107. We got some feedback from the municipal court to make some adjustments, both there and also on page 111. So if you would, you can, you can flip there. Basically, for example, what we're going to look at here with underage smoking, that we were advised that our citation amount of $10 was just unreasonably low. And so, based on that input, made these suggested changes. There's also a question, and this is the next to last question. This is a question about the warming shelter. And it's, it's really a three-part question. It first is, the question is, where the money for the warming shelter that the city has allocated is to be found in the budget? And that amount of money for the warming shelter? And then, lastly, the third part is sort of a general question, and I think it's related to the conversation last, last week. And conversations have been ongoing about people downtown. This is how the city's budget helps people. So I'm going to circle back to that. But first, I'm going to ask Diane to talk about the more specifics of those first two questions about the warming shelter, because she was so directly involved in that.
Sure. So the city receives community development block grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Those funds are administered through the redevelopment authority. If you look on this community developments website, under community development block grant, you'll see all of our annual action plans and everything that we fund. And so we fund the warming shelter on an annual basis for $20,000.
I would add that it's important to, to remember that the redevelopment authority is somewhat of an independent existence. And so the CDBG money is flowing to the RDA. And those of you who've sat on, on the redevelopment authority are very familiar with what I'm talking about. And so you wouldn't see that specific allocation in the city budget, because it's under the, the authority of the redevelopment authority. And then, back to that third part, this question about how the, how the city budget helps people. I would start by saying that that's the whole point of it. But I get that we are endeavoring to talk more specifically. And so certainly the biggest, single biggest thing that our investments target of the list I'm going to share with you would be low and moderate income housing. The city has come before the council on many occasions over the years to talk about tax incremental financing, development agreements, et cetera, that are targeted at investing city dollars in housing for low and moderate income people. Millions of dollars. Most recently, we talked about the possibility and the vision for creating apartments, multifamily, living in the FEV parking lot area. There's a very high likelihood that there will be people who fit that criteria of needing workforce housing who will live there. And their rent will be less expensive than it would have otherwise been as a result of the city's involvement in that. Same is true for the Brook Street Lofts on Brook Street, a number of other apartment complexes and projects in the city. And so that's on one end. On the other end, senior housing on Macy, you know, that apartment complex at Macy and Merrill's, another project that we were involved in. So that, I start with that, because that is the biggest, by far. Millions of dollars have gone in to provide housing for many people who need it. Some other examples would be essentially our transit system. We, we charge about one-fifth of what it costs. So our fare is covering a very small portion of the overall cost. In any given year, as recently as 2022, it costs about $15 per rider. We were charging about three. So that is an example of providing mass transit for people who need it, but at a, at a price that, that seems reasonable. We get a lot of help from the federal government about that. So not here taking credit, just explaining that, that's how that works. We have a similar model for our swimming pools. Our swimming pools cost about, roughly about 4X of what we charge for entry. And the reason is, is because we don't, we don't want to filter out kids from the swimming pools who might otherwise not be able to afford it if we were charging $8, $10, $12 to get in. We're charging a fraction of that. Some other areas that might not be as apparent would be the senior center. You know, the senior center's been a place, I think that, you know, there may be people in, in the city who don't know what goes on in the senior center, but it has thousands of visits a year. And I would say that it's, one of its primary outcomes is it prevents elderly people from, you know, the desperation of loneliness and isolation. I mean, that's, and I think that is a real service to the city's, you know, older population, but maybe not thought of in that way. Because, you know, we, you are investing, if you approve this budget, almost $400,000 to operate a first-class senior center, but it's totally discretionary. You know, that, it's, it's there for, for that, that purpose that I just described. There are a number of other things, I won't bore you, you know, with, with the list, but we can go into deeper detail if you want to. But I just wanted to share those in response to the, this prompt that I received about how the city budget helps people. And so, you know, there, there are many other similar endeavors, but those I wanted to point out to you maybe as conversation starters. Then I had the last one, and this is certainly related to, you know, what, what we've been talking about with homeless folks. This one, I'm going to read it more or less verbatim. It says, "We all know that we have a population of people experiencing homelessness in our community, yet we don't have enough space for them, even with the two shelters." I get this is a very unpopular subject, but, you know, as leaders, we need to essentially deal with it, right? And, and create solutions. And so I think that's, I think that's accurate. We, as I've said to you and to others, starting in probably May of 2024, we saw an uptick of homeless people that, that was in excess of what we'd seen in previous years. And we saw that continue in June and July. We've taken a number of steps to address where homeless people have congregated, where there are conflicts between where they've congregated and, and small business people, in other cases where there were safety concerns. But we, we've got a long way to go. I would say that one of our areas of focus right now is, last winter, for example, warming shelter starts operation in November. That's typical of every year. And then in the morning, the warming shelter closes for the day. The library opens at nine o'clock. Many people from the warming shelter were going from there to the lobby of the YMCA. And then shortly before nine o'clock, transitioning over to the library. That's not a good long-term solution. There's a lot of conflicts in that model. And, and the YMCA wasn't designed or built for that. It wasn't staffed for that, neither was the library. But we've got a lot of partners, nonprofit, non-governmental partners. But we've got a lot of partners, nonprofit, non-governmental partners in the downtown area that we need to prompt them to be part of the solution. And that's our short-term effort right now, is to reinvigorate that. Because I think in 2022, 2023, we have probably became complacent as a community, relying on the YMCA, the library, and the warming shelter to be kind of the three legs of a stool to help people, especially in the cold season between November and March. And then, what that does is it creates, I think, a reliance on the YMCA and the library, even in other times of the year. And so, we're looking to bring others into the conversation for other solutions where people can go, frankly. And you heard Chief last time talk about how we'd identified 24 people, and 22 of them were from Fond du Lac. And what we need to continue to do is encourage them to stay in contact with their family, friends, relatives, et cetera, who are here in Fond du Lac. That's the importance of that answer to that question, I think. So, are these the answers? No, but they're part of the solution, I think. But there's no doubt 2024 was different. After all these years that Fond du Lac's been here, for us to have this peak season was a learning experience. And we're still responding to that. And I know the library board's going to be talking about it this Thursday as well. So there are a number of conversations ongoing right now. I'll be meeting with Advocat in the next couple of weeks to talk about strengthening the effort there and the partnership. So, there's also, in this question, reference to the cities of Madison and Appleton. And they are building facilities, by the way. Madison, I didn't realize this, but Madison didn't have a facility for single men. And so, one of the efforts they're making is to fill that void. But Madison and Appleton have numbers of homeless population that create for them funding sources that are unavailable to cities like Fond du Lac. Because our challenges are modest compared to those. Give you example, the shelter in Madison that's being built in partnership between the city and the county, Dane County, $23 million. I mean, that's a serious undertaking. So that, you know, it's a totally different scope. Certainly, they're making all the right decisions for their challenges, but I just wanted to mention, because that was part of the question. So, with that, Tricia, I think you've got some comments you want to add, and then we'll open it up to questions.
So all of our budget work over the summer culminated at the end of August with the publication of the proposed budget and the capital improvement plans, which you all have before you. At the last council meeting in August, I kind of pointed out some highlights in the budget memo and provided a summary. I just wanted to hit those summary points again, because I think they're very important in, you know, the context of all of our budget discussions. So we have a balanced budget. We have equalized property values continue to increase. Our net new construction is the best that it's been in four years. Our overall equalized tax rate has decreased. Our employee wages are increasing by more than our initial forecasts. Our health insurance premiums are remaining flat. And there are no increases in our water or sewer rates. So we've spent the last couple of months over the summer, you know, presenting all of our budget information to you. We've hit the questions that you've given us in advance. So now, the rest of the meeting is yours. If you have any other feedback, questions, suggestions for changes that you'd like to see in the proposed budget or the CIP?
All right, thank you. There was a lot there, so I'm hoping maybe there are some questions. So I'll open it up to council, if you have any additional questions on the budget. Mr. Schussler.
Question from Spencer. Page two of the summary refers to the Fives Project, $3 million. Are we, is the city council going to be informed along the way of like potential alternatives? Or are we likely just going to come at the tail end, looking at a development agreement?
So we've gone through the request for proposals process, and so we already are working on a partnership with a developer. And so, yes, you'll be brought forth with a development agreement because of the tax increment district. But a developer has been fine-tuned, and we are working on that negotiation right now.
One other question.
Sure, yep.
Fund balance, Ms. Davey, over $10 million. Is that, I know a council member, Patrick, brought up, when that chart was up last week, it seemed that it was on the high end. Is that, either Mr. Moore or Ms. Davey, is that something that's, there a reason for that, that it's so going to be the high again in 2025? Projected to be, I mean?
Pardon me a minute. Mr. Schussler, I want to get to that page. Maggie, would you take us to page 16, please? Mr. Schussler, as we're navigating to that page, what we're showing here is our projections through the end of 2025. So if you don't mind, I'm going to try to project to 2026. I will tell you that part of the reason for, there's two primary reasons for the growth in the fund balance. Number one is because what the state legislature did with shared revenue. I mean, that's significant effect here. The other is, because of the labor market, we've had more vacancies than we have typically had as an organization. And when you have a vacancy, you have unspent budgeted personnel funds, right? And so, there's a small part of that growth in the fund balance that is due to that. You wouldn't expect to see that, you wouldn't see any of that if you had full employment. And you never really have full employment for an organization as large as ours. And so, what I would expect is, because of, if we, if the labor market gets better, in other words, we see more applicants, we're able to fill more jobs more quickly, then we won't see any more growth in fund balance coming from the vacancies. If the labor market stays tight, or we have trouble competing for new employees, then we'll have some growth in that area. I don't foresee this fund balance, pardon me, the shared revenue contributing to it so significantly anymore, because now it's replataoed, right? We had this big bump last year. And from '24 to '25, it was 2.3%. So it's now moderated again. And I would expect that because the economy slowed a little bit, and because it's now tied to sales tax revenue, that we won't see a significant jump from '25 to '26.
One other question. The wage study, I'm just wondering, because of what's changed in the last year, we've got the extra 1% in our budget for the non-union wages. An enhancement to the health, is that a fair statement? It's enhancement to the health insurance benefit?
I think it depends on who you are, right? I mean, because everybody's got, you know, very particular needs when it comes to that. But I think so, yeah, overall.
All these layoffs in town, somebody yesterday mentioned their rent in a housing complex, which I can't believe they would even raise the rent. The rent's going up by like $400. And it seems like it's coming onto some hard times. And we have the county that's already done a wage study. So, somebody might ask, why do we need a wage study?
The reason why is because after, it's been over 10 years since we did one. And in the interim, we have been looking at specific skills every summer as part of the budget prep. And we are informed by what skills to look at, by department heads telling us about feedback that they're getting, Deb and her team knowing that certain jobs, we can't seem to fill, because we're told we're non-competitive. And that's new information. We weren't hearing that three years ago. We are hearing that somewhat now. And so, rather than, rather than take three-quarters of the positions that are in public works, for example, and ship them off to a consultant and ask them for the eachs on each one of those positions, I want to reset the whole organization. And, you know, most of that is in public works. They have by far the most, because the two chiefs, their workforces are primarily union. So, it's going to be primarily public works, and then the rest of everyone will be administrative. But we're seeing challenges in hiring everywhere, frankly. And the county's wage study, to some extent, reset the market at a higher level than it had been, because it moved wages north. And so, that's something we've got to pay attention to. We've lost some employees to the county. Good for them, and good for the employees. But, you know, all of those things have gone into this. But primarily, it started in my thinking, when we were hearing from applicants who were saying, "I'd love to work for you, but we just can't make it work. You're not offering enough." Fair enough, Deb.
Correct staff leave to take positions where they're paid more. And normally, we can have some type of discussion, and sometimes I can work something out to keep them. I'm not, I'm losing on those discussions pretty often.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Leering?
Just something about the wage study. The county was 23 years past due on the wage study, and it greatly helped us. It stopped some of the bleeding of employees. It's important that we're competitive with other cities that are of similar size. And just to make people feel valued and appreciated is very important. So I think the wage study is really important. And then, maybe even the county will lose some people to the city, you never know. I do get a question about bulky waste pickup. People would like to see that added back in at least once or twice a year. And the spring and fall would be ideal for people to get rid of things in the spring, and then before winter comes. It's really inconvenient for some people that work to get, to be able to drop things off. So I feel like it's something we could really do, even if it's once a year. I agree with people who are talking to me about it. And then, lastly, something that you were talking about with the homeless people, since we had that city council meeting, there's a lot of people that, you know, came in and didn't speak, but there were a few that spoke and talked about how we don't, you know, there's people in the downtown, they're in front of their businesses, it's bad for business. And I understand that. I understand both sides, though. So I did bring up something a couple of months ago. I would like to see it in the budget next year, or maybe if some nonprofits can come together in the city and get together and make a space for people that are homeless during the day when they leave the shelters at night. They don't really have anywhere to go, so they go to the library and the YMCA. But I would like to see something similar to what I have volunteered at down in Milwaukee. They are, they have places where you can go, and one of them's called Repairs of the Breach. And what it is, it's a place that people can go to. It's kind of off the main part. I mean, this is a way to get people, if people are complaining out of, you know, out of the front of their businesses, give people a space. They go inside, they can, you know, get a sandwich, a soda. It's not a lot that's handed out, because you don't want to encourage things. But then they can go out into a green space where there's grass, picnic tables, trees. They're not sitting on the cement with their belongings. It's fenced in, so they have their own space. It's a big, nice, green space. Just, you know, there's board games and picnic tables out there, and there's volunteers. So social workers and counselors are out there. And then people who can direct them to resources. And I feel like that would be a good, that would be something that the city or people in the city, nonprofits, could invest in a space like that. And it would be something that could be maybe two blocks off Main Street. So, I mean, and this is something I'd really like people to consider as a solution for that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll give you some background on bulky waste and just waste in general. So, in the city of Fond du Lac, all of our waste, none of our waste operations are tax-funded. They're all funded by a fee. And so, if you own property, you're charged $89 per year to have trash picked up at your house and for the bulky waste site to operate. And it entitles you to bring bulky waste to the bulky waste site for free, up to a certain size. And then beyond that $89, there are some one-off charges. And that's if you have refrigerator you want us to come pick up, because we come pick up at people's houses, but we charge for it. And it was about, probably 11 years ago now, that we transitioned to that model, so that everything that has to do with trash is fee-based and not taxpayer-supported. So, if we were to move to a bulky pickup across the city, we would need to talk about the revenue side of that, because of where that labor, that equipment, et cetera, would come from. So, and that's a pretty involved conversation, because we're talking about 15,000 or so residences. It's a pretty significant undertaking, to go from the way we do it now, which is, somebody calls us and says, "I need a couch picked up," or "fridge picked up," whatever, to a citywide, rolling trash pickup from all the terraces in town. So that, just background on how that works. It's not tax-supported, it's fee-based. And on the homeless subject, what I would ask is for some, for some time to coordinate with some pre-existing capabilities. There are spaces near the downtown, and there are places with good-hearted people in them. We need to see if we can max that out, because right now, we're not.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. First off, I wanted to congratulate you and you and everybody who worked on the budget. You know, I went through it, and I didn't find anything that I was worried about. Maybe the first time. You know, I had a couple minor questions about the really far-out years in the CIP, but, you know, we'll worry about 2029 when we get a little closer to it. Well, you know, I mean, these are placeholders, anticipated expenditures, and, you know. So I wasn't going to waste everybody's time going through that. I did have one question for Diane on the Fives Project, FIVE Project. Do you have an idea of when we might be seeing a development?
Given the fact that we're kind of entering into the holiday season, I would like to say before the end of the year, but probably more than likely shortly after the first of the year.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Not seeing any, and Mr. Moore, you addressed the ones that I had sent you in advance from me. So I couldn't think of anything else either, because as Mr. Mullin said, you know, this was a very straightforward budget. You know, pretty much, most things are staying as is, which you can't really complain about, because things, I think, are running mostly very smoothly. Then I would like to move on to any motions to change the budget, if any council members wanted to propose anything. Mr. Schussler?
I would like to make a motion to add $30,000 to the community development budget, to be distributed as a grant to Envision, with direction that Envision dedicate staff, time, and efforts to city housing solutions.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion? Have a second. Have a second. Sorry, Mr. Schussler, but that fails to reach a second, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other motions that any council members would like to propose? I'm not seeing any. And Mr. Moore, I'd just like to clarify, if council members do wish to see changes to the budget, this is not our only opportunity to do so, correct?
That's right. And if you are inclined to discuss anything in any more detail, the best time to do that would be the first meeting in October. It's kind of hard to believe we're talking about October already, but, I mean, that's, that would be the perfect time to do it because we're going to publish the budget, pardon me, we're going to publish the agenda for next week's meeting, tomorrow. And so you've got essentially the next couple of weeks to think about, you know, what you've heard tonight and over the past few weeks. So that first meeting in October would be just, it'd be great. And because we would need to react to that if we're going to change the budget summary because that's what we send to the newspaper, right? That one that kind of captured, that one page out of the budget that captures everything. So that would be the perfect opportunity to do that. But before that, please feel free to send Tricia and me, anybody, any questions you've got, and we'll have that conversation.
Wonderful, thank you. So with that, then, we will move on to our CIP presentation and overview. Again, our City Manager and Director of Administration.
We've gone through, you know, over the past few months, a number of the details. And I just wanted to mention what we have in the pipeline, what we have in the pipeline for housing. So, because a couple of you asked about FEEV and what's going on there and when. We also have in the CIP, and I want to point this out because it is a significant change that we're proposing to make investments in neighborhood development to get houses built. And our investments would be targeting the offset of expenses of infrastructure. That means sewer, water, storm sewer, pavement, et cetera. And when we talked about that before, it seemed like it was a reasonable approach to you, but I wanted to make sure because it's completely different than we've done in the past. In the past, we've focused on projects like the one at FEEV. So, and I would also mention to you that in coordination with that, you'll see on the tomorrow's agenda that comes out, the housing market analysis will be on the upcoming meeting and the associated strategic plan proposal. So you'll be seeing the CIP in the context of that, too. So I'm not going to sort of regurgitate all the things we've talked about. I just wanted to highlight that, those new investments for housing. And then obviously, take any questions.
Are there any questions from council on the CIP? Mr. Mullen is trying to hit his button.
On the housing facilitation. They had a project in Campbell'sport, and the median value of those homes were about $350,000. You know, and I have a place near Campbell'sport, you know, so I'm there all the time. That is not the average wage of people living in Campbell'sport. You know, these were houses basically being subsidized for commuters from Milwaukee and West Bend. And, you know, I'm concerned on ours. I mean, I understand that we need to do these kinds of things just the way it is now, but that we are, again, subsidizing kind of lower end rather than subsidizing higher-end markets. So, I mean, can you give me some kind of assurances on that?
Let me see. I can assure you generally, but not specifically. We'll need some more time to develop the details to give you more specific assurances because, as I'm sitting here right now, I wouldn't be surprised if the houses get built and the asking price is somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000. Because the interesting thing about our housing market is the new houses and the recently built houses, they've skyrocketed in value, or I don't know if value's the right word, and price, right? And so that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with numbers that we haven't talked about before, frankly, for relatively modest homes, you know, 2,000 square feet, 2,500 square feet. $275,000, $300,000, it's kind of the going rate right now. But I can't tell you what those prices are going to look like. We're not there yet.
Okay, but that, I just wanted to express my concern there.
Sure.
You know, if we're going to subsidize housing, let's concentrate on workforce housing in preference to suburban housing.
Yes, and we will circle back on that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council on the CIP? I'm not seeing any, so, hold on, we got Mr. Heitzler.
Sorry, late on the party here. Yep, sorry about that. Mr. DeVries, just a quick question for you, if you don't mind. With everything that happened with the shed fire and everything else, is there anything that we need to worry about budget-wise, CIP-wise, anything like that? With that, can you give us just a quick update on where that's all at?
No, there's nothing to worry about. We have money from the insurance company, right, Tricia?
Correct.
And then we also have money in the CIP to help cover, bridge any gaps for that. So we're engaging a consultant right now, and we'll be good to go for building it next year.
Excellent news. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I'm not seeing any other questions from council, so then next we can move on to the Plan Commission recommendation to approve.
So the Plan Commission on Monday night, when they met, they passed along their recommendation. That will be part of the official resolution when it comes time to adopt the budget. There is a whereas statement in there stating that the Plan Commission does recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council on that? Not seeing any. So then I'll move on to motions to change the CIP. Are there any motions from council members? Not seeing any. So again, as Mr. Moore described, we do have more opportunities if we wish to make motions to change the CIP, particularly that meeting in October would be the most appropriate time. So seeing no other questions or discussion, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh my gosh, who's second? A motion by Mr. Zimmerman, second by Ms. Leering. This is not debatable. Please proceed to vote. Are we doing voice vote?
Sure.
Aye. The ayes have it, we are adjourned.